To tonight's city council meeting, appreciate you being here. I'll ask Pastor Jason Garcia with Celebration Church to come forward. If I can ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear God, we want to thank you for everything you've done in Fairhope so far. We pray over this meeting today, Lord, that we do our best to steward what you've given us. God give us wisdom and insight over this meeting today. Help us to make Fairhope the best that it can possibly be. We want to thank you in advance for everything that you're doing in this town and in our lives, Lord. God, we just pray for a great place and we just pray for a great community, Lord. Thank you for everything that you're doing. In your prayer, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you very much, Pastor Garcia.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, just a couple of notes. As mentioned in the work session, item 38 has been pulled from the agenda. Item eight, when we get to that, strike out on the first sentence there for 60 days. And then also, the term, instead of ending on December 31st, 2021, would be September 30th, 2023. Also, depending on what you decide to do with item 13 on the selection of Neil Schaefer, I would add a very minimum recommend that we change when it says negotiate a fee schedule, say, instead of "and establish," or say, "with" a not to exceed the limit of $40,000. So get rid of the words "and establish," replace it with the word "with," and then also get rid of "with" this term and replace it of $40,000. And then I'll let you determine whether or not you want to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute the contract, or just negotiate the fee schedule. Or someone else could negotiate the fee schedule and execute. Or, you know, like I said, we could authorize them to execute and she could let us know what it is and we could say, well, we're going to approve it at the next meeting. That's been done before, too. Okay, all right. First item on tonight's agenda will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings that were held on October the 11th. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes?
Make a motion where you approve the minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Does anybody have a report for the mayor tonight? Okay, no report from the mayor. We'll move right on through this. Public participation for agenda items. If you would like to speak to items six through 37, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, remember number five will be a public hearing. So if you want to speak to item five, there'll be a special term for that item. So items six through 37. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm going to be speaking on item number 21. For the record, my name is Kenny Graves and I serve as the Executive Director of the Baldwin Pops. And I wanted to come to the city council and officially thank you for putting this on the agenda and for your consideration of approving the $3,000 for upcoming concerts for the Baldwin Pops. We look forward to many more years of providing free concerts to Fairhope and the entire Baldwin County area. And we're actually, we're starting our 24th year as an organization and 23rd year as a performing organization. So again, we thank you very much for your consideration and we hope that you'll come and join us at an upcoming concert.
And we thank you very much, too. We look forward to seeing you many, many more years as well.
Good. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else for public participation for agenda items, I'll close public participation. And remind everyone that if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, this night on tonight's agenda, you'll have an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Martin.
I just want to congratulate our football team for being regional champs and think those kids have met expectations and surpassed them. So congratulations to the kids, all the kids on that team.
Very good. Councilman Conyers.
Would definitely like to echo that and reiterate what Pat brought up earlier tonight, that we have an away game that is going to be played at Valanta Park. That's away, Murphy's the home team technically, but that's going to be this Thursday night. So please come out and support the Pirates for the final home game. And also, I just want to offer condolences to the Ford family. Dorothy Ford, the widow of longtime council member Mike Ford, passed away over the weekend. And just a wonderful family. If you know any of the Fords, I'm sure you probably do. But just please, prayers and condolences to the Fords.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Robinson.
I would echo the comments of Councilman Martin and Councilman Conyers, but I do not have any additional comments.
Very good. Councilman Boone.
Well, repeat, repeat. I would like to echo and give my condolences to the Ford family. Mike was a fine fellow and his wife was just as good. And I really give them my heartfelt prayers to their family, to the Ford family.
Thank you. I also will extend my condolences to the Ford family, a very large family at that. So, you know, they've been a part of this city and part of the leadership of that, this city, for many, many decades. So, you know, she will be, she will be missed and we're very, very, very sorry to hear of her passing. Also want to say that at the next council meeting, something that we have not done, well, we did it a year ago and then we did it four years prior to that, and we did it four years prior to that, but we haven't done it within a sitting council during the term of the council in quite some time, is that next council meeting, we will have an election for council president. This is something that this council had decided to do at the beginning of our terms. And so we will, I'm pretty sure I know who will get that, but we will start a rotation, much like many, many cities do, and we will name another council president. And I want to tell everybody, I just appreciate the vote of confidence that you've had in me for the past nine years. And it's been a real pleasure. And I would just encourage you all to try to learn as much about the position as you can. Try to attend the league's events that will educate you in all matters of government. I think that they're very, very helpful. They've been helpful to me. And I would also remind everyone that I'll still be sitting. I'll be sitting where Cory is now. I've never sat there in that, although I've been place one now for nine years, but I've never sat there.
It's good to travel every once in a while.
Yeah, I think I sit there before the election, and then I moved. So, yeah, I think I've started off there. So I will be down there and much to the chagrin of the department heads, I will probably ask just as many questions from down there as I do here, unless the council president asks them, and I don't have a need to. But, you know, I take, I take this very seriously and so I'm sure that I'll ask a million questions. So looking forward to that. I don't know if I can take the pay cut of $100 a month, but I'll try to, I'll try to get by. And to the new council president, I hope you find something to do with all your newfound wealth.
Yeah, right. You got to make that budget, Pat needs to make that budget.
And also say, there is a possibility that I will be traveling on business during that meeting. So if I'm not here, I really am going to really, really regret that. So I hope that I'm able to be here, but if I'm not able to be here, it's because I had a work trip and not because I'm, you know, upset. I'm actually very excited, so this would be fantastic.
About to be for some freedom.
That's right. Very good. With that, I'll close council comments and we will move to item five, which is a public hearing. Request rezon the property of Anthony Tocquey and Kristen Combacker. Am I pronouncing that right? Look, if I'm messing up those names.
One of those is silent.
If I, if I got those wrong, I apologize. From R4 low-density multifamily residential, residential district to R3 TH high-density single-family townhouse residential district. The property is generally located at the east terminus of Gaston Avenue and on the east side of South Section Street at 211 South Section Street in Fairhope, Alabama. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Fath, Hunter?
Thank you. The, this is zoning change and it's a pretty easy one. It is down zoning, so we're going from a denser zoning to a less dense, so R4 to R3TH. TH stands for townhomes in our zoning ordinance. The zoning is currently shown on the left of the screen. Area on the right, there is one single home on two lots, this is actually two lots, one home is there. And the applicant, this, a zoning change like this does not require a site plan. So the zoning is independent of what is shown on the plans. There will be a follow-up MOP, potentially site plan, but can run concurrently for the actual development. But what is shown is, is what was provided by the applicant. It's showing saving the existing house, taking a shed roof off the south side of the building, but saving the existing house and creating two more townhomes with, that kind of shares some of the architectural characteristics. So, you know, won't go through a lot of these notes. There's, these are technical, you know, things that, like I said, this will be allowed to, if we merge this, it will be administrative replat to create the one lot and then three units on top of that for three units. That will be a further planning commission review for the kind of the technical merits, the drainage and those type things. We do have a list of criteria that the comprehensive plan and other criteria of a zoning change, we foresee no problems with this. We did have some concerned citizens at the planning commission meeting, but I think there was some confusion of the zoning and mixed up R3TH with just standard R3. This went through the planning commission, who unanimously voted to recommend approval for this case. I will be happy to answer any questions. I will show just a couple of images provided, so a more clearly defined plan that we will review in the future case is provided here with a little sketch of what the buildings might look like. Again, saving the existing home, providing two others. There's a project behind this that's similar in the scope of how it addresses the street, the setbacks, the spacing, but the architectural designs would be different. Looking at some of the neighboring properties, this is actually the lot in question. And you can see the house just on the right of the screen that's being preserved. That's same house, right? Okay. So I will be happy to answer any questions you may have on this one, if you want to look at any other images or plans.
Hunter, R4 low-density multifamily versus R3 high-density single-family, what would, how many units could you put on those lots if it was R4 low-density multifamily?
The, it would allow duplexes, so theoretically four. I mean, when we start looking, you know, depending on the MOP, when you start looking at that, some of those things can come into play.
It's 25% less than what could be on there in the current zone.
Yeah. And the applicant knows, there is a risk to that. You know, worst-case scenario for them, they can do two units. So when we go look at setbacks and drainage and green space requirements of the MOP, the worst-case scenario is two units, but I think there's, you know, flexibility to look at two or three.
And you know, sometimes it's, it's nice to be able to compliment developers when they come before us. And if I'm not mistaken, the brick townhomes that are behind this, were those developed, Mr. Dyess, were those developed by you?
Yes.
Am I right? Didn't you receive some awards for those townhomes?
Yes.
I believe you did. They were nicely done. We don't get to say that a lot.
That's right.
Questions, council? Okay. Let's open up the public hearing. About $1,000 a night. Remember that last time? Lisa had to stay only.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Anybody that would like to speak to the rezoning? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any further comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would the developer like to speak to this matter?
I will. I really need to. I do appreciate y'all considering this. We did rank for planning committee. There were two people there, just FYI. The guy next door's son had some questions, but he didn't really understand what was going on. And then the neighbor across the street, and they got up, and they saw what we were trying to do, they got left because they really don't have an issue either. It'll be nice, and, you know, it's a transition, a block of downtown Fairhope, one block, we're the first block outside CBD. Obviously, we don't get any benefits from CBD, but it's a great location. We just cleaned it up at Fairhope. That's what we intend to do.
You get the benefit of wanting to be, everybody wanting to be close to the CBD.
They like it. You know, I heard when we did those other ones, you know, and I will tell you, we did make a mistake, I made a mistake on the other, but I didn't keep one, because they really are nice. They turned out to be the best lot, best lot in downtown Fairhope, in my opinion. And I would get away in 2004, '05, whenever that was. But, you know, we saw Judge Cox and Christie Lee won, and then, you know, Steve Winston did one, you know. They hit later. We just got through them. But it was, this would be nice. We kind of, we really want to keep the old Fairhope house, Dave, true. Folks that have done the work to it prior to now, they did do a great job. They put a bunch of tile and stuff in there, but did not level it up. And so, you know, it may change in time, but hopefully we'll be able to get it close enough that nobody will notice all that stuff. We'll be able to keep it monthly. One of old Fairhope houses, but there's so many being torn. And I like history and I like that kind of stuff, so hopefully that one and the two that we made, we compliment that one with the last.
Be careful, that might come back to haunt you one day. You can come back.
What's that?
You said, be careful, that might come back to haunt you one day when you come back.
That's not a petition.
I got to say, council, usually I ask people to get up to the mic, but when a Dyess is speaking, they don't have any problems hearing them, so.
I'm glad for being y'all. He's like a bird. They might be related, but, you know. Excuse me, guys.
Any questions? We'll let this lie over for final consideration of the next council meeting. Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item six is final adoption of an ordinance to approve an application from Lonnie Gibbs Doing Business as Mustache Mikes for a franchise agreement to install and operate an Italian ice vending car 100 to 200 feet left of the Fairhope Boardwalk Pier, which was introduced at the October 11th city council meeting. Do you have any discussion you'd like to have on this council? I mean, this has been, he's been longstanding, longstanding franchise agreement in the same location, so I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
I'll make that motion for final adoption.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council president.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number seven is a final adoption of an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1463, amending chapter 20 of the traffic committee, article one in general, section 20-2 of the Fairhope Code of Ordinances, specifically the committee members, which was introduced at the October 11th, 2021 city council meeting. And I think that this just slightly changes the makeup of the committee, being that some of the positions didn't exist anymore.
Right.
And just, you know, including those that need to be included. For instance, we don't have a city administrator. We don't have a planning and building director. So those have been cleaned up to planning director and development services manager, among a couple of other specifications. So, any questions?
I make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council president.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute the interlocal agreement between the City of Fairhope and Emerald Coast Utilities Authority for the acceptance and processing of source-separated recyclables for the City of Fairhope and Emerald Coast Utilities Authority. Strike for 60 days. The initial term of this agreement shall begin on the effective date as defined in paragraph 2.4 and end on September 30th, 2023, provided, however, that the parties may extend the term of this agreement upon mutual written agreement. And we discussed this in a lot of detail in the work session, a lot of good discussion on that. So unless you have any questions for Mr. Johnson, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission regarding the roundabout at County Road 32 and County Road 13. The city will provide intersection lighting for the project at the city's expense and pay for any required costs associated with beautification upgrades to the project, including but not limited to irrigation for islands, concrete staining, and concrete stamping. Also discussed in the work session. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just want to say that I'm glad that we beautified this roundabouts. I think they've, they've been doing a good job of that. Hearing no further comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission for the use of county voting machines and the services of the county voting machine, custodian, and employees for municipal elections. The use of the county-owned voting machines is at no cost. The city will reimburse the county for the costs associated with services of the county voting machine custodian and employees for municipal elections. Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11 is a resolution, the city council approves Dewberry Engineers for an increase to the professional engineering services for project number two, Bayou Drive, Fairway Boulevard, and Fairhope Avenue Transmission Systems Phase 2A improvements from Fairhope Avenue at Ingleside to Bishop for construction, engineering, inspection services that were not included in the original contract, which was for the design and master planning and authorizes the mayor to execute amendment number two to the contract with an estimated cost of $102,609.65. This professional service will be concluded once the CE and I for Fairhope Avenue at Ingleside to Bishop Road is completed. And I'll remind you, as specified in the work session, this amounts to 6.5%, I believe we said the total is somewhere 13% or below for all of the CE and I and for the design and master planning of that. And Tim is here with any questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve this election.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to perform architectural engineering design services for the replacement of the existing HVAC unit for council chambers with a not-to-exceed amount of $16,220. We also discussed this in a work session. They're taking out a 30-ton unit and they're replacing it with whatever they deem as appropriate, whether that be five tons or 10 tons. More than likely, it won't be 30 tons, but the need is for us to be able to integrate it to the existing ductwork. Any questions for Richard? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Neil Schaefer Incorporated to perform professional engineering services dedicated to reviews for the planning commission, cases for the planning department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule with a not-to-exceed limit of $40,000. The council right here, if you want to amend this further, we can say and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Or you can leave it be and it can come back to us for further consideration.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, or to make a motion on the resolution adding for the mayor to execute the contract as well, for the not-to-exceed of $40,000.
Okay, all right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hunter, do not like these. I trust y'all to come back with a good fee schedule. I think it puts us in a, at a disadvantage when we're negotiating fee schedules, when we negotiate them and execute them before we've seen the number. But, you know, I'm going to trust y'all to get this right, because I know you need it. We all know that you need it and we don't want to handicap you. But I would ask you that if you are ever worried about coming to the council, you know, I asked why you didn't do it at the last meeting and you said that, you know, we had the budget and some other people have been slammed for asking that, just, you know, ask, just ask the question if you have to ask the council president or whomever it is prior to, don't, don't ever be too worried about asking, okay? Because we do understand that. That's a lot easier to accept than getting in a rush and approving a contract with terms that we don't know, we don't know exactly what they are yet. And we have confidence in you and the mayor to do that, but you don't know what number they're going to put in there. They could raise their rates 10%, 20%, knowing that we've already approved it. So, okay, thank you for listening all day. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a non-participant services agreement and addendum number one between Electric Cities of Georgia and the City of Fairhope for safety and training topics specific to the electric utility employee. Subject to the city attorney's approval, in addition, ECG, or Electric Cities of Georgia, will provide a specific annual safety audit and a detailed report. This is a budgeted item with a not-to-exceed amount of $29,000. And that's also stated in the work session, I believe, that AMEA is going to reimburse the city $25,000 of that $29,000. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize the execution of this agreement.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2021 F-250 regular cab, 4x pickup truck, or equivalent for the water department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total estimated cost of $41,450 and the equivalent not-to-exceed budget amount of $42,000. Entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2021 Chevrolet 2500 HD Silverado, or equivalent for the water and sewer department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total estimated cost of $46,744.45, the equivalent is not to exceed the budgeted amount of $48,000. So I'll entertain a motion for the purchase of this truck.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item seventeen is a resolution to City of Fairhope to procure a new Freightliner one fourteen SD chassis with mounted equipment or equivalent for the sanitation department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the source well contract, and therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. The total estimated amount is two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, and equivalent is not to exceed the budgeted amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So I'll entertain a motion to procure this budgeted Freightliner.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I like the way y'all did that. You let the left side go for a while, and they got the horse, now the right side's going. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item eighteen is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the repairs to truck unit number zero three three one four that was damaged by the drive shaft braking. Replace the commodity wiring harness from the front to the rear of the truck. Replace the ABS harness. Replace the DEF lines. I'm not sure what that N is in there. Lisa wrapping in the, in there. Lines in the hoses and the fittings. Labor. It's my last home. If you like that, kind of rap. And towing for some with an estimated cost. Hold the best for the last. And the same for an estimated cost of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. An insurance claim has been filed for the damages. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the repairs to the truck.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nineteen is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance for an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars to support economic development facilitation within the City of Fairhope. Counsel, on items nineteen through thirty-four, as stated in the work session, these are all annual community development appropriations. We've appropriated these funds mostly in the same amounts, or in one or two cases, even less than what we've done in the past. So I'm going to go through these pretty quick, and, you know, stop me if you have questions, but I'm going to breeze through them very quickly because this is nothing new, and they were also approved in the budget and have been for many years. So on item nineteen, I'll entertain a motion for the mayor to execute the contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item twenty is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Trailblazers for an appropriation of five thousand dollars to support the Smart Vaults and the walking school bus program. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin Pops for an appropriation of three thousand dollars. That would be in cash, and in-kind services in the amount of eighty-four hundred dollars. The resources including personnel but not security after normal business hours and provides an exception to the sign ordinance by allowing banners for their citywide events to be displayed ten days prior to those events to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope, and to provide free concerts yearly for the residents of Fairhope. I'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I believe our own Jeremy Morgan's a member of Baldwin Pops. I don't know if he slid out, but just wanted to throw that out there.
He does. What does he play? A French horn?
Trumpet.
He does play, he plays the trumpet. Okay, very good. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-two is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Carehouse Incorporated for an appropriation of five thousand dollars to help with continuing support for children who are victims of sexual and severe physical abuse, and to help with the distribution of the child abuse prevention curriculum. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the City of Fairhope and the Downtown Fairhope Business Association for an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-four is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce for an appropriation of twenty-one thousand dollars, which includes fifteen thousand dollars for the annual leaders council program to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Have two motions in one second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-five is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract with the Eastern Shore Arts Center for the use of city facilities and for an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars for funds to support and sponsor the educational programs of the Arts Centers Academy of Fine Arts. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute that contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-six is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Economic Ministries Incorporated for an appropriation of ten thousand dollars to support the needs of Fairhope residents. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-seven is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Film Festival for an appropriation of six thousand dollars to help bring sustained economic growth from the film industry to the Alabama Gulf Coast through its Fairhope Film Festival. Entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute this contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club for an appropriation of ten thousand dollars to be used to assist and benefit all sports in both men's and women's athletic programs, and to approve the use of the Fairhope Civic Center for the annual drawdown and silent auction. I'm going to read this, and I may ask you to change this. Date to be announced, which includes the use of associated rooms as needed, placement of a tent in the parking lot, and all rental expenses paid by the club, and the use of facilities, tables, and chairs in the tent. Eric, do you know if they're going to have that again, or did the poker night replace that?
No, it did not.
Did not replace that.
Casino night is trying to become our fall event. This is happening, and I believe it's March sixth. It's the Saturday after that Tuesday.
Okay. The reason I asked was I was going to say we could just change the language if we had needed to, but no need to do that.
No, sir.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion for the mayor to execute this contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number twenty-nine is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Point Clear Youth Club for an appropriation of fifty-seven thousand. I'm sorry, that was a tongue twister. To help manage and operate the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club facility, which includes cleaning supplies not to exceed two thousand dollars, that is included in the total amount. I'll entertain a motion for the mayor to execute this contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I believe that that was cut, and then by five thousand, and the five thousand dollars was added back to that appropriation, if anybody's interested in that. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Mobile Bay National Estuary Program for an appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars to support activities related to stormwater education and watershed management. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty-one is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract from the City of Fairhope and the United Way of Baldwin County for an appropriation of one thousand dollars to help with continued support for their collaborative effort with health and human services agencies, works to build, grow, and enhance the well-being of citizens in Baldwin County. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute this contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty-two is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an indemnity agreement between Oak Colla Farm Incorporated and the City of Fairhope for the city's Christmas event for city employees at the barn on Friday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from twelve PM to three thirty PM. And, you know, that was not in our community development funds. I said through thirty-four, but nonetheless, something that we have annually. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the indemnity agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I think the cost is in there maybe as well, if you look in your binder, since that wasn't stated. Let's see here, just for the record there. This is just the indemnity agreement. I don't see the cost in that in there. Maybe they'll bring that, bring that, that coming into other resolution?
I saw that somewhere today, too.
I saw that somewhere today, too. I thought I saw that cost like per person.
Yeah.
I could tell you exactly what it was, too. It's just like everything else in the budget, still has to come forth.
I know, I read it.
It's twenty-five or twenty-seven dollars per head, but just bring it next meeting, if you can. We'll just, you know, I don't see it, and we will approve the indemnity agreement, and we can just approve that cost. Is anybody going to vote no on that cost? Just so we, you know, Americans feel confident that we're going to approve that?
There's never been a resolution for that.
Well, we just passed a resolution to spend a thousand dollars to United Way, but we're going to spend ten thousand dollars for employees' lunch, but not approve it?
You're authorizing the contract. The indemnity.
Doesn't show the contract, doesn't show the, doesn't show the value of the contract at all in there. That's what I'm saying. There's no, there's nothing on the cost in there. And I did see that, though, somewhere. I mean, I saw that in the last couple of days.
Here we go. It's an email.
Oh, it's an email, yeah.
Email from Gail on the twenty-first.
Just bring it back. It's no big deal. Just bring it back for a resolution. All right, where are we at on motion in a second? We have a motion in a second. All right, on the indemnity agreement, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty-three is a request from the Eastern Shore Optimists Club requesting an in-kind donation to use the Fairhope Civic Center for the Dogwood Trail Pageant and Scholarship Program. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item thirty-four is a request of, for the golf green fees and cart fees to be waived for the Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation Golf Tournament. I'll entertain a motion to waive those fees.
So moved.
Back end.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item thirty-five is a request from Ailey Cometti with the Fairhope East K-Six Parent Teacher Corporation in collaboration with the Fairhope West Parent Teacher Partnership and J. Larry Newton Parent Teacher Organization, requesting permission to close the streets in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, from six AM to ten AM for their seventh annual Pirate Dash, and requesting the use of barricades at major road intersections to protect the runners. The Pirate Dash will begin and end on the bluff at Henry George Park. We did make sure that that did not conflict with Mardi Gras, which I think is the following weekend. Chief, do you know of any, I'm sorry, not chief, Officer Hammer, any reason, Lieutenant Hammer, any reason to deny this application?
No, within plus or minus everything organized, should be, should be up there.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Charlie.
I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty-six is a request of Lindsey Simmons, I think we've heard of her, requesting a road closure. And she's sat through thirty-five items, requesting a road closure of Bancroft Street from the intersection of Fairhope Avenue to Oak Street on Sunday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. Did I say December twelfth on that last one? I said February the twelfth. Okay, did. December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, from twelve PM to five PM for a half-mile fun run sponsored by the Eastern Shore Junior Auxiliary for their Jolly Jog. They plan on having Santa present for pictures, two trucks in the parking lot behind the library, and costume contest for participants, and it will be a family-friendly event. Officer, I know some shady people out there, you know. Is there any reason to deny this application?
No, it's only street from off to Bancroft. We might say it's a little bit.
Right. We did ask in a work session, just in that event, that somehow Section Street was closed, and people are rerouting that. I just, that's the only thing we asked that question, to make certain that we would be open for business, you know, somewhere. So...
Yeah, we, we may not, don't feel involved or prepared for that. And they should be open out there pretty quickly.
Right. Okay. And it's a Sunday, too, which helps, I think, a lot. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Item thirty-seven is appointment to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. Somebody pronounced Rick's last name for me. Is it Speed or Spite?
Spike.
Spike? Okay. All right. Just look up that information. We had so many agenda items, Lisa had to add some tabs to my book. So the nomination for the Environmental Advisory Board is for a four-year term, ending February two thousand and twenty-five, filling the expired, unexpired term of Janine Norman. So that's what I wanted to get. So I'll entertain a motion for the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item thirty-eight was removed from the agenda. Last item, public participation. If you have anything else to bring forward for the council, you'll come to the podium, state your name and address to the record.
Real quick, you mentioned the football team. The volleyball team is in the Elite Eight right now. They start playing, they're playing the next three days in Birmingham. So recognize...
Do they play tonight, Eric?
They play. I think they said the twenty-sixth, I believe. It was twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, I believe. But the Lady Pirates are in Birmingham in the Elite Eight. Let's see if we can bring home a state in volleyball.
Johnny Hunt's girl is playing in that LG. Are they on, on video streaming?
I need to double check. Pirate Nation Live is not allowed to broadcast.
Well, the national one.
It's probably on the NFHS, but you have to, you have to pay a subscription, but we can't do P and L for playoffs.
Right. Yep.
Okay. I have to, I pay this subscription. Anyone else? Casey and no one else, I'll close public participation. I'll entertain a motion for adjourn.
For adjourn, I just want to say, in the event that Council President Burrell is not here next week, I think nine years of service, you deserve a round of applause.
Well done. God bless you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that, counsel. All right, all in favor of the motion to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Get it hard.
We're adjourned.